Yes, you know well.
Oh, uh, you call him Mike Chu, I call him K T. K T.
K T.
It was, it was nearly.
Yes, it was more than forty years ago.
Mr. F. Chai, I think you remember your husband.
So, I think.
I have two years.
You know the trip, so I imagine.
Don't embarrass me.
Doctor Pali Pali, good to see you.
Doctor Pali Pali, good to see you.
I'm, I'm, I'm older now, I'm older now. That's a student here. I'm older, I usually be younger, beating up.
So this is to live in Brooklyn?
Yeah, I always told you say I had a liberal American life. I only went to. Okay, married woman, my two men. What?
I have jokes for all of us.
I'm kidding you. I never had a woman.
What does that sound like?
What do you say?
Hello, we are, we are in the same, in the similar.
The series.
The series.
Okay, let's see.
Josephine.
Oh, I know, the back.
The back.
Yeah. I'm like, super sad. Bring back memories, all time, wow.
Last time we did.
I was hanging a talk. A ranking, yes, yes, yes. That was my last one. I wrote it, two thousand and eight.
Post dance.
I know you want to interview or.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Super my challenge. I don't understand the belt. I know how you look, but I don't, but you know, in line, some of the day.
Y'all.
They're called last to come.
You guys from growing up.
Who are the Trump thirty four year old? The next year, your top winning will be nineteen twenty four. Every ten years.
So you, he was, he was.
Yes.
So.
So, yeah.
Oh, great.
Oh, from.
Wow. All time.
You just couple have the book, have a thief.
And if I see.
Don't touch my role. That is what I'm like. Hopefully, that recall years.
Actually, I actually. Oh, well, you're not the second generation. Yes, we back, we're on school.
I'm married, Peter. Thanks for coming.
Ka Ching Chu, this is. Ka Ching, yeah. Uh, that's weird that we switched after. I always forget the page, okay. Not very recent, but a little bit three years ago. I'm retired. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But he's obviously Canadian, local Canadian.
Oh.
I was just. You are still. Wow.
I'm afraid. Were you gonna be kicked out or like?
Boy, no. What my friends were here. Even though I'm tired. Didn't catch. Man, I don't like.
Well, that's it. That's everything.
Good, good.
That was.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Thank you, sir. How are you?
Yeah, I see you, someone sees me today.
All right, this is my advisor, the major. This is my advisor, Pali.
Oh, no, no, forty years ago.
Thank, thank you so much for.
Oh, hi.
For screaming.
Missed it, and keep forward to your top. It's a classic. I mean, you spend some of your pockets a year. I still get a check every year. Well, still I have a lot, more than fifty years. I recently had a very dear thing, so my form. I think that's technical. They came back this. You look at the last. Why, yeah. Well, that's the thing to people would have. I feel me. He's been.
So deep.
Work together.
My excellent advisor.
I don't know.
Hi, Larry Ho.
This is our director of information.
Oh, okay.
Hi, this is my advisor, Peter Pali. And I.
You were nice and unemailed for so long. Well, soon, Peter.
You're a long overdue actually. You have to have. Well, I've been. Your advisor, the, the, the advisor, forty years. I'll be sure.
Your friend has been here thirty eight years. We were coming.
We're comrades in that, you'll hear, you'll hear.
Uh, I still. Ah, yes, yes. Then you were telling your. Eighty twenty. I was. As people. I was one of. But I don't. But I. But he is still going. That was. That's a lot, he's not worried. I've been done. Yes, you fuck. Oh, yeah. I'm five. So you only said what the good remains when you're out of. The conference. Exactly.
I don't think. Not a taxidermy.
But he definitely made jail. Thanks.
Sir. I won't, I won't stand here.
Let's look at the others. They say or to reduce and love song.
Basically. That's, that's, that's.
All right. Ninety six. So I just double checked with him, he said, when I was. But he mentioned, when we just talked in the lab, he said in ninety nine. This is a basic consequence. This one is nineteen eighty six and nineteen ninety three and nineteen ninety six, nineteen ninety five.
Yeah.
It's a little bit more.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I think. I don't keep.
Yes. I know. We also.
Very good as well.
I have no hope of.
Um, it's just, uh, it's what we thought like teaching. And I can do something. Just to. Um, yes, there are the exact.
Oh, you'll choose.
All right.
Good to see you. Always the right.
Your family.
Oh, we're from this. That's the girl here. Should be. Do they already say?
I don't like my.
My. Fix, fix.
He's like, he look.
I don't know where you want the little part to be.
Oh, no.
I want to block you.
Oh, yeah, thank you. If you come here.
To block you, okay, I'll block you.
Sorry.
Thank you all for, for coming and celebrating the award that Professor Peter Liu received as a distinguished board of trustees professor. He's a fourth father lead in our department following Dr. Barshalom, Brad, Yubie, and Christian Pali Pali. So it's great to have another B O T father lead in our department. Peter joined UConn in nineteen eighty, coming from Harvard. He's had a number of positions within the university, including department head from two thousand and six to two thousand and nine. He was a director of B C A for, for a number of years. He's been a mentor to a number of faculty, particularly in the finance systems area. He'll talk a little bit more about his research, but he's an expert in optimization with applications in smart manufacturing, the smart grid, the smart buildings, a lot of smart building. He's.
Smart cube.
So it's, it's really great that he's here. So first, I have Dean Kazanunian say a few words, and then we have quite a few of his guests who would say a few words as well.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I'm really happy and delighted to be with you today. Before anything else, I want to congratulate the university for having selected such an outstanding, outstanding scholar and researcher to the highest recognition that the university can offer. And it is not accidental that we have quite a number of such outstanding faculty in this school as a board of trustees distinguished professors. I mean, again, it's not probably accidental that all of them are in this department.
No, all part one. Or all. Raj is the.
Oh, Raj is not, okay, but it's kind of computer science. And, and I would have, I would have been in this department if they would have accepted them. At some point, I gave a talk on, on La Grange relaxation, the. How can I get? La Grange, meditation. Amateurs for optimization. Right, I'm, I'm a student optimization and I follow part of Peter's work. Um, but, but I think what is amazing about Peter is they say that what one can donate to, to his environment more than anything else is time and dedication and passion. And you look at the forty years that Peter has been with us and some of the activities that you mentioned, whether that is directing B C A or, or being part of the Vinci program and supporting the high school students. Or a number of other activities that you have undertaken, being part of the Asian Student Faculty Club and leading that. Or on when the university, when the School of Engineering needed an outstanding leader to lead and develop a strategic plan. Peter was there and we relied on his broad shoulders to do that. Actually, on a more personal note, when I was thinking of ten years ago, six years ago, whether I should run, throw my hat in the ring for, for becoming the dean. Peter was a person that I went to and sought his advice and asked him, he thought I could do this. And so he's been an outstanding colleague for all of us, he's been an outstanding leader. You look at his students and success of his students and where they have gone. So thank you very much, I think, for, for training him and sending him to us. And he has equally returned the favor to the society by sending outstanding, outstanding graduates out. Our congratulations again, and it's great to have you as a colleague and a friend. Thanks.
Thank you.
So, so Peter has invited a few of his, the folks that mean a lot to him here and know a lot, so he put him, obviously, like everyone. Uh, but one of the things that he, he did and as an Asian American faculty himself, that, that he did that was important was setting up the Asian American Faculty Association and they're helping lead in create, the creation of the Asian American Cultural Center. So I wanted to invite Angela Rola to say a few words. Angela is the direct, current director, oh, founding director.
I started when I was eight. Because we are twenty six years old on April eighth. I'm gonna read here and I apologize, I usually will stand and talk verbatim, but I only have a few minutes. I can't go until four o'clock, Peter told me. Um, so pardon me because I'm gonna read my notes. So thank you very much for inviting me, Peter, I am totally, I was flabbergasted when I got your email and I thought, am I going to be in front of a lot of electrical engineers? And I am, obviously. So good afternoon, everyone, I am Angela Rola, I am the founding director of the Asian American Cultural Center that has been on campus and will celebrate its twenty sixth year on April eighth. I am excited to be with you and to honor my friend, Peter Liu. And first of all, Peter, a public congratulations to you for being awarded this high distinction. In the few minutes that I have, I'd like to share with you a bit about who Peter is and what he has been involved with and accomplished outside the field of engineering. Peter and I met after the occurrence of a horrific racial incident involving eight of our Asian American students in December nineteen eighty seven. Yes, we've been colleagues and friends for all these years. Immediately after the incident occurred, Peter, along with other engineering and School of Business faculty, formed an Asian American Faculty and Staff Association, something that had not existed on campus at the time. It was not just the urgency of creating a more formal group of faculty and staff that was its focus, but rather the realization that Asian American community issues were not of concern at UConn. That Asian American voices were not being heard and very few Asian Americans held higher level positions on campus. Working with students, this group fought for five years for the creation of an Asian American Cultural Center, an Asian American Studies Institute, and more library resources about Asian American history, people, and culture. Throughout those five years of struggle, I witnessed and admired how people of Peter interacted and worked with all groups of people, whether it was students, faculty, staff, or administrators. He was a true social justice advocate, long before the term became part of our daily vernacular and practice. He remains that way today. He is a force in a non-forceful way. He uses silence, pauses, and even a wry smile as a strategy to react to unpopular sentiment. Quite an amazing feat and very hard to replicate. His tenacity and his willingness to fight for what was right helped our community build a strong presence on campus. I, as well as the Asian American community, owes much to Peter. He continues to be a warrior for us, and I seek out his counsel during difficult times. Although I may not know or fully, honestly, fully understand his field, I know it's important and I know what he does helps me in my daily life. I do know that here is a person that seeks to make sense of the world and find justice through many lenses. What an honor it is to have him as a colleague and a friend. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and to share a little bit about Dr. Liu, our friend Peter, or colleague Peter, that which many of you may not have already known. Thank you very much.
So, as I mentioned, we had, as I mentioned as well, we have four B O T distinguished professors in the department. We have two of them here and I'd like to invite Yakov to say a few words and then Christian to say a few words afterwards.
Mine is going to be.
Okay.
Not Peter's.
Okay.
That's what he asked me to do.
Okay, thank you. Everybody, it's quite a show, or you know, so many people showed up. I got to say, Peter, that you are a very popular person. And I will start with the quotation that Krishna sent it to me the other day by email, saying the.
I did.
Yes, you know, you know, I remember things. I, I, the good things that are worth reminding you of will follow. A doctor prospers, prospers on the sickness of mankind, a lawyer prospers on the quirks of mankind, but an engineer prospers on the prosperity of mankind. Now, Peter is really the embodiment of the latter. He took care of optimal electric power delivery, optimal manufacturing, optimal temperature control, all keys to our prosperity. Now, I have another version of this doctor, lawyer, engineer comparison as follows. Doctors help people preserve their health to enjoy the wealth if they have any. Lawyers help people protect their wealth, or at least are supposed to. Stockholders, and I also can add, financial engineers, transfer wealth and take a good percentage out of it, assuming their name is not made of who made ninety nine percent of that as commission. And, but now we cannot enjoy it. Now, real engineers create wealth. And I think that's really, we can see that we are together in this School of Engineering and all of us in one way or another, but Peter in more ways than some of the other, that many other people contribute to it. Last but not least, I'd like to remind now Larry Ho of what he said when I called him up when Peter Liu was interviewing here. Why? Because I knew him from the Control Systems Society meetings and I had a colleague before coming here at Systems Control in Industry who was also a Larry Ho advisee. His name is Kai Ching Chu. Uh, so what I asked Larry is, how would you compare these two things? He said, I was working with Kai Ching at the time. We went by the name of Mike Chu for, for a while. And his answer was, these have the same natural intelligence, but Peter is an order of magnitude more hardworking. And this is an understatement, I would say. Because Kai Ching Chu retired, went to IBM, took it easy, I think. After a while, he worked with me at Systems Control, after a number of years at IBM, he stopped publishing. So Peter is at the top of the profession. That is really what I said, an understatement of what you said about his hardworking. I even remember when he was departmented, I was getting emails with a sending time, three A M. So I conjecture that until two A M. he was working on his research. So you can see how far he got. And I just want to congratulate Peter. For his. I'm proud to be in the same company as you. Krishna.
Well, I'm supposed to talk about our systems group in general also. Systems Group is very pleased that Peter Liu is conducted as a board of trustees distinguished professor. It's like he asked me to give a quick overview of our group and also the history of our group over the years. So we are about ten active faculty, and this is something that Yakov might like. We are either bimodal and multimodal distribution. We have very old people and also very young people. So, and also maybe somebody, somewhere in between, maybe Peter Villett and Shangili Chow. So we are, we have five and five. All the five senior faculty are I P P fellows and three of them are B O T distinguished professors. And this group is actually, the reason why I came to UConn is because it's a very cohesive, very friendly group that actually collaborates a lot and publishes together. So that's a great thing that the UConn Systems Group is known about. And also is a highly funded group of people in the E C E department. And this excellence in the systems group actually did not start today. So this group had an illustrious background almost since the nineteen fifties. So we had Ralph Kochenberger, who developed describing function theory for nonlinear systems, and that is standard in a lot of the textbooks nowadays. And we had David Lindhoff, who actually wrote one of the first books on sample data control systems and also worked in adaptive control. Uh, we had David Kleinman, who was my advisor. And he was only thirty three when I came to UConn, and I didn't know that he was a superstar in optimal control, especially linear quadratic regulator type problems. And also he developed this something called optimal control model for human response. And of course, we have Yakov Barshalom, who did pioneering work in stochastic control, then he went out of control and started with something called multi-target tracking. And I need to tell somebody that, a guy from M I T., very well-known professor, John Leonard, who's in mechanical and also ocean engineering, recently told me, he works on self-driving cars. And I told him that, yeah, Yakov is getting involved in that, and he said, Yakov is like my god, he's my mentor and taught me everything I need to know about tracking, so.
It's good to be out of control.
Right. So, and we also had Charlie Knapp, who did a lot of work in underwater acoustics and also probably the best teacher ever. And David Jordan is a department head extraordinarily, he was an excellent department head. Uh, Peter Liu is actually keeping that flame of excellence burning bright into the future with this award by making exceptional contributions to smart kit, smart buildings, smart manufacturing, and smart power systems. And we are very thrilled for you, Peter, congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, Angela, Yakov, and Krishna. So I'd like to invite Peter to say a few words about his work. Okay, just a few words.
There's the art of summarizing in a few words a lot of contributions.
Thank you very much for the dean. What's the dean? Right, you bring a hat. I'm honored and I'm overwhelmed. Very appreciate your coming. I want to first thank my advisor, Larry Ho, and Sophia, right, for your coming. I really learned a lot from you. And also all the Asian American movement as we work with Angela, and also Suresh. Also, we start from Larry. That's through his encouragement, through his enlightening, through various years, really appreciate that. So I got support from many. Let me just say a few, a few words on some of these issues from university and from family and faith. Y'all know, we have great colleagues. Let me just say a few words about Yakov. I got, I moved, I came to know UConn because through Yakov. Through lunch at Hunan Cafeteria in Cambridge. And he paid me, he paid me for the travel expenses to move from Cambridge to.
That was a good investment.
I think it's about $120.
It's good you did have more furniture.
And Yakov taught me how to work with industry. The first one is a northern system. Yakov also brought me to IEEE, Control Systems Society, working with ACC and CDC. Really appreciate that. Also, when we talk about Dave Kleiman, Dave Kleiman brought me to the first research project and with MIT as a subcontract. So UConn is a prime, MIT is a subcontract. Krishna, I learned many things from Krishna. Optimization, fault detection, and many things. I really admire his fat thinking and his entrepreneurship with company and with university. Some very nice balanced work, and his company is making great progress and contribution to the industry. Really appreciate that. And there's great students in the man lab, and so many of his students taking the lead on that. Also, I appreciate working with Peng Zhang. His working experience in the industry really helps quite a bit in terms of working with power systems. My wife said to me, you have 25 hours.
25?
25. But Peng, it seems every day he has 48 hours. I don't know how hard he works. I think it's really a great department and a great group. I also want to thank the leadership from the, yeah, let me say, I want, thanks for the nomination team. Nomination, Krishna is the chair of my nomination committee with Yakov, with Rajiv Banse, with Peter Willett. Formerly said nomination committee for me. Appreciate that. Also, the leadership from Rajiv Banse to John Candy, also from Dineri, from Kazan, and from Michael. Really appreciate that. And also the previous, I want, I have to mention the previous, our dean and previous provost, Meng Cho. He's inspiring, great memory, great vision, and great heart. He's really, we really miss him as a provost, but he is really good, he's really great, and we hope him the best. We have our great students working through the years. So you will see, after my talk, you will see some of those. And we have some here really coming from California, come from New Jersey, and from Hartford. So some other will give some short talk here. I thank my late parents for giving me a good education and a loving risk environment conducive to learning. Also, I thank my wife for giving me the time.
For not complaining that you were working till 3:00 AM, right?
That's right. And for a very, very supportive position in various activities. My son, my daughter, and their spouses and our four grandchildren is really a love, a source of joy, a source of fun. Also, I'm a Christian. We thank some of my Christian friends here. We thank God for his guidance and protection. Also, thanks brothers and sisters in the church for mutual support, mutual prayer. So let me say something about my work. I'm really excited about it. It's a critical problem. It's a common problem we encounter every day. No one knows how to solve effectively. I think we have a great approach. So, this is okay. The key point is optimization. Some optimization are easy, some are difficult. The ones that involve discrete DC variables are very difficult. What does it mean? Discrete means you turn on a generator or you turn off a generator. Zero one. You cannot say I turn on the generator 0.7 or 0.8. So discrete is either off or on, or you have discrete DC variables. And continuous variables, for example, generation level. Once you turn on a generator, what's the generation level? That's a real number. Or the driving speed, or the temperature in the room, those are continuous variables. So there's no good way for predictive, live from, no good way, to solve a problem either with a discrete DC variable or with both discrete or continuous, that's called mixed problem. So our ideas in the two simple ways is decomposition and correlation, decompose and coordinate, and formulation tightening. You might want to say, why optimization? Why don't optimize? Why optimize? So for students, you want to get, what? You want to get, you are satisfied with C or B. You want to get grade A. Want to get a grade A? The question is that, how much time do you have? 48 hours, like for such a job? Or you have many courses to take? Salaries. Who said after graduation, oh, to get $30 per year, I'm satisfied? But how much responsibilities are you willing to take? To like a swimming break or want to have fun? How much money do you have? And for its company, how much profit do you want to make? But how much risk do you want to take? So as a person, as a team, as a department, as a company, want to survive, want mediocrity, or want excellence? So what's optimization? Optimization is to achieve the best subject to various constraints. That's optimization. So let me just use two examples to illustrate ideas. One is a power system operation and manufacturing scheduling. First, power system operation. So we have a system with a different type of generators, thermal, nuclear, and now we have a solar, we have wind. But all together, they have to meet demand. Demand is time varying, as you can expect. At midnight, demand is very low, but at 9:00, 8:00, 9:00, it's very high. So the demand is time varying. So the question is that, which generator should we turn on? At what time? And what's generation turn on? What's the generation level? So the turn on, turn off is binary, it's discrete, but generation level is continuous. So it's a mix. So how important is the problem? Let me give you an example. For MISO, so that's covering Midwest areas, largest independent system operator in the state. So per day, per day, the fuel cost is about $50 million. $50 million. If you optimize it, you save 1%, how much is that? 41%, how much is that? For each day, how about 365 days? How important is that? So it's far more important. I hope you can sense just from this simple example. So this, as I said, involves both discrete and continuous variables, on, off, our generators, and generation levels. So they are important. So smart grid, as we just talked about, intelligent manufacturing for the factory is also crucial and homes and buildings in terms of lighting, in terms of air conditioning, many things. Think about air conditioning is about consume about more than, about 40% of building energy consumption. That's huge. So fundamental difficulties. So we say, for a problem with continuous DC variables, like this one. So here's continued DC variables. Suppose here's a cost function. So we know the minimum is this point. And the minimum point has a characteristic that the slope is zero. So we have a necessary condition. So we can develop an algorithm to find out where's x star the optimum point. So that's well solved. But for discrete DC variables, those point, the function are defined only at a discrete point of time. If you turn left a little bit, turn right a little bit, it's not defined. So there's no gradient, no slope, no necessary conditions, no nothing. So to get to the optimum solution is so difficult. So the complexity increases exponentially. So just like this, when the problem size increases, the complexity increase exponentially. Let me give you an example. It's a small quiz. Talk about manufacturing schedule. So which activity to do, and what resources, and what? So think about the simplest case. Have one machine, 10 parts to do. How many possible sequences? You think about, if a student has three homework assignments, A, B, C, how many possible sequences? The first one to do is either A, or B, or C, is that right? If we do A, the next B or C, would it be the next A or C? So it's what? 3 times 2 times 1, 3 factorial, 6 possibilities, it's okay. About one machine, 10 parts, how many possible sequences? 10 factorial, 10 factorial is what? What's the size of 10 factorial? You know, 2 factorial is 2, 3 factorial is 6, and so on. How about 10 factorial? 3.6 million dollars, 3.6 million. If we want to evaluate each of those to see how good they are, and we have very fast processor that can evaluate 20 million possibilities per second, very fast processor, 20 million per second. How long would it take? Well, 20 million possibilities per second, but we only have 3.6, 3.6 million possibilities. So what? Less than a second, right? Less than a second. Is that clear? So now if I double the number of parts, 20 parts, how long would it take? Here's, less than one second. How long would this take? How many say, what, 2 seconds?
100 years.
Who's the guess? 100 years? So say 20 factorial, divide by 20 million possibilities per second, become 40 seconds. So this number, is this so many possibilities? That's factorial. Divide by 20 million possibilities, become 40 seconds, divide by 60, become 40 minutes, become, divide by 60, how many hours is by 24? So this comes to where? This come, in China, it's Confucius time? In the Bible, it's a Jove's of time. This is a very simple problem. There's no factory has this kind of setup. For real factory, it's messy, uncertain, huge. So the problem is important, the problem is difficult. So there's no effective methods. If people use heuristics, the problem is so hard that you just use heuristics. So like, for example, for students, which one is due first? You do it first, right? Which one is the easiest first? I do it first because I get easiest one out. Or sometimes I do the longest one first. The one that take longest time, I do it first. But those are heuristics. How good they are? I don't know. You try. So have you heard about song "We Shall Overcome"? "We shall overcome." Have you heard about that song? We are on the way there. How do we do that? So first, we are not trying to get exact output. There's no way to get it. So what we want to try to do is to get good solution, but it's not just good. You say watermelon, you say my watermelon is sweet. Nobody would say my watermelon is not sweet. How sweet it is, how sweet they are. So want to get good solution, near optimum solution with quantifiable qualities. Who can quantify the quality, how good they are. And want to do it fast. I think Rob, who has mentioned to me, for manufacturing problem or for nursery problem, if you cannot get it in 10 minutes for a factory, it's gone. For power systems, 20 minutes or 30 minutes. After that, no way. Nobody is going to take a look at your results. We need to do it fast. So we explore several different possible features as separability, duality, linearity, and tiny. You don't have to worry about all this. But essentially, the first is decomposition and correlation. So the problem is what? The complexity increases exponentially. The problem set increases. So if you say, let's use parallel processing. Parallel processing, the formula is sublinear. You cannot help. But you're going to decompose it, problem set becomes smaller, the complex decreases explanation. So that's a feature. So an example about how do we divide 200 people, 200 apples among 50 people? How do we divide? 200 apples, 200 apples divided into among 50 people. How do we do that? How do we do that? How do we do that? Each one get what? Four. Is that good?
Very good.
We have been here, Professor Hua here. So should we get four as well? So let me say, okay.
My teacher get zero.
So we say, that's weighted sum. They ever got double, or Professor Hua get double? Is that good? I'm allergic to apple, I don't want it. Someone is crazy about apple, they want more. So what's a good way? So you're the market economy, what's market? You set a price, then you adjust the price based on supply and demand. If I say one apple is one cent, tell me how many you want. So I'm not doing myself, I'm not doing optimization myself, but I let you do the optimization. So rather than I, for me to solve a big problem, but you individually solve much smaller problem because I give you the price. You tell me how many you want. That's easy problem. So you can tell me. So one cent is too, too, too cheap, now I get required for five hundred. I have two hundred, what do I do? We surprise. I say five dollars per piece. So again, I adjust the price and you tell me, you do the calculation. I don't do the calculation, you do the calculation. You tell me. So five dollars expensive, so I maybe get ten. I got a lot to be, to be written, so what do I do? I reduce price and I keep on doing this till roughly, I say the demand is about two hundred and five. I say, okay, stop. Okay, then use simple heuristic to get feasible solution. So it's a divide and conquer. Also, before I do the heuristics, the cost there is a lower bound of the optimal cost. So I get lower bound, I get physical cost, I can quantify the quality of the solution. So essentially, this decomposition coordination, this logarithmization, the price is shadow price. So you compose a problem, you solve individual problem, which are much easier than for one to solve it. Adjust price based upon supply, demand principle, use heuristic, heuristic to get feasible solution and measure the quality based upon lower bound. This in calculus, this in economics one-on-one. So is that? So is that okay? But if I say, if I have apple, not just for today, but also for tomorrow and the day after tomorrow, for seven days? Not just for apples, but also have mangoes, watermelons, and so on. So I have a price for each day, for each fruit. So then I generally set up prices, let you to solve it, tell me, and adjust. So this, again, this is economics one-on-one, so too simple. This is so intuitive and has been, the market has been around that for hundreds of years. What's the difficulty? The difficulty is because discrete DC variables. Because of these discrete DC variables, because what's your apples? We can just either one or two or three, we cannot say, can we share apples with you? So it's discrete, the problem become very, very difficult. So we have this kind of exponential growth complexity. But we believe the focus, the decomposition is only way to solve this and behind the complexity increase. Exponential increase complexity because all decomposing, the problem come so simple, the complex decreases exponentially. By the way, I have thirteen slides altogether, on page nine. Now we're on page, page ten. So major difficulty is because it exists of discrete DC variables. So we do not have the slope, we don't have the gradient, but we have subgradient. So that, I don't, you don't have to understand all this. But the difficulty is that it doesn't work. The method, once involved, discrete DC variable, doesn't work. So in the nineties, people are still using this for power systems. But in the early two thousand, one by one, people give up. Move to branch cut. If you say move to ziplac, agree. So while we present the work, they say, are you still working on this? Why are you still working on this? Nobody is working on this. So it seems to be a depth to the logarithmization or decomposition coordination approach. But under the support from Joseph and working with Mihal, we really found a breakthrough. We overcome all the major difficulties of this traditional algorithmication. Overcome the difficulties why the time? It was a different insight, different approach, and different results. So the method becomes so powerful. Really making use of the explanation reduction complexity of decomposition, you have very good way to coordinate. You have a very powerful method called Sargay, algorithmication. And also we have, you don't have to worry about this. Absolute value, Sargay absolute value to actually convert this, you don't worry about all this. So it's a decomposition coordination approach that's a rapid and raise performance to a new level of success. So that's decomposition coordination. The second is formulation tightening. Think about this, we have a linear problem. Now we're talking about a linear problem. Suppose here, these are the constraints, these are the constraint, linear constraint. We have to find the point inside, inside this. And suppose level curves are like this. In a sense, all the points along this line has a cost of hundred. Out here has a cost eighty, out here has sixty. This one is, this one is better for this, a lower left curve. So it's a linear, we call this because objective function is linear, constraints are linear, so it's a linear problem. So can you tell me where's the solution? What you find the best point? The one with the smallest value inside is higher. So should be this point, should be this point. So this is the solution. The problem, this linear problem, problem is easy, it's well solved. The packages, you can use it. Okay, let me ask you a question. Suppose we restrict ourselves to discrete DC variables. There are nine points, nine feasible points. We're not talking about confused variables, but we have discrete decisions, there are nine points. Tell me which one is the best point? Again, this object function, you can see the points here with a cost above a hundred. This one is in between, is about ninety, is about seventy-five. This is the best. Is that clear? That's a bad point. This is bad point. But that best point is not the same as the confused best point, not different. So this confused point, the green part is easy to obtain. The red point is hard, is hard. The question is that can we convert the problem? Can we reconstruct the constraint? Previous constraint are like this. If we reconstruct constraint, so that constraint directly describe this convex hull. Think about this. Sin squared, suppose we can convert constraint to the righty meaned convex hull. Then we use a linear problem for to solve it. Which point are we, which point are we going to get? Are we going to get this point? So if we, in the pre-processing stage, can reconstruct the constraint, like we call tightening, the constraint are tight, but once you get this, the constraint are tight. Okay, get tight constraints. Therefore, when we really solve the problem, it's a linear problem. There's no complexity. So once we obtain the convex hull, we get optimal solution. So essentially, the combinatorial problem comes simple. So the question, how do you do it? How do we do it? Very few people look into this issue. A lot of people like, how do we solve it? Give me the problem, how do we solve it? Nobody said, how can we reform this problem? So that we can solve it easily. So with Bing support from ISO New England, who did some, some breakthrough. In a literature, nobody, a few people present a type of issue, but nobody said, how do you do it? So let me use a simple example to illustrate the idea. So we have binary problem, problem is a binary, so zero or one. We have two variables, x one, x two. X one could be zero or one, x two could be zero or one. The constraint is x one plus x two should be greater than or equal to from five. So you, you think about this, we have a square. We have a square. So this is x one, this x two. The x one could be zero or one, x two could be zero or one. So this point is a zero, zero. X one equals zero, x two equals zero. This one, x one equals one, x two equals zero. This, x one equals zero, x two equals one, and so on. So we are in this axis, this square. Constraints that we have to be on this side. Is that clear, this problem clear? So what are feasible point? So there are four points. This point, this point, this point, this point. But this point is not feasible because x one is zero, x two is zero. That does not satisfy constraint. So only three points satisfy constraint, three. So these are the three points satisfy constraint. So previous constraint is like this. So we have, we have this area, but we really want to have this one. The question are giving origin constraint. How can we convert constraint so that we get this point? How do we do that? So if think about it, if we relax the constraint that's x one, x two to be binary, so x one could be from zero to one, anything, x two can be zero, one, to anything, and we have this constraint squared there. So if we relax integral constraint, and we can get this convex hull for this energy relaxed problem, we can get this, this five dots, five dots. Get five dots, easy. Get this five dots, easy. But we don't want these five dots, we want three dots. So with this giving five dots, we'll go back to get the three dots. Three dots, they describe the convex hull. Once we get convex hull, the problem is out. It's a linear problem, so easy. How do we get that? So we can see this actual, this actual, want to take, want to get rid of those. How do we get rid of those? All these variables coordinates are either binding, are binding, is zero or one. But this one, and this x two equal from five, it's not binding. This one, x one is from five, it's not binding. So if we grab any other coordinate, any other point, who's coordinate, who's coordinate or not binding? Just drop them, nothing else, just drop them. Once we drop them, once we drop them, then we get convex hull, that's it. So nobody look at this. So Bing, we look at this, this is so simple. We just drop those non, non integer, non-binary vertices. We drop them, then we get convex hull. So they can be done in the data pre-processing stage. We don't have to do it in the real optimization process, but in data pre-processing stage, we can do it. And then optimization will be simple. But still, to get this, still complexity. So what we want to do is, well, for the problem, it's hard to do, but when we decompose the subproblem, we can tighten the subproblem formulation. So what I've shown, that this approach is really powerful. You know, we decompose or not, it's powerful, but it's essentially goes hand in hand with the decomposition coordination problem. We first decompose problem into small problems, subproblems, and then we tighten the formulation, we're coordinating. The last slide, the takeaway. This kind of problem with discrete DC variables is inherently difficult. We see it every day, everywhere. No one has a good solution. Just heuristics, just particle swarm, using many other things, no good solution. So our goal is not to get optimal solution, but rather want to get near optimal solution with quantifiable quality and fast. And approach is decomposition coordination, that's general. But with for linear problem, we can do a systematic way to tighten the formulation for subproblems, and we can do it in the very effective way. In a sense, we believe it's fundamentally resolve such difficult problems. So we have another version, that's Mihal and Bing's developing, with a distributed and synchronous version. You think about industry for the zoo or future factories, we can have self-optimizing factories. People talk about industry for the zoo for the industry, for many factory, say self-configuration, self-diagnosis, sell this and sell that, self-optimization. What's the theory? There's no theory. This will provide a theory. Not just the factories, but also grids and buildings. While working with Professor Tan, I'm just trying to develop this self-optimizing smart grid and microgrid. Thank you many former students, current students, and colleagues. And for today's talk especially, thanks for Mihal, Bing, and Joseph for providing the support. I think "We Shall Overcome", we are underway. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Bing Yan, currently an assistant research professor working with Professor Lu. I obtained my PhD with him from 2016. Now I feel very honored to stand here to introduce our remaining speakers, all former students of Professor Lu. Let me introduce the first one, Professor Shi Zhongzhang. He graduated in, oh, two thousand, oh, sorry. He graduated in nineteen eighty-six. He is the first student of Professor Lu. Currently, he is a professor at National Taiwan University in the Department of Natural Engineering and also Institute of Industrial Engineering. He was also director of Institute of Industrial Engineering at NTU and also a commissioner of National Communications Commission in Taiwan. In 2011, he became a member of Yucan Academy of Distinguished Engineers. Now let us take a look, what does he want to say to Professor Lu across the ocean?
Professor Lu, Mrs. Lu, distinguished guests, friends, and professors of Yucan. Congratulations to Professor Lu. Congratulations to Professor Lu and Mrs. Lu. I was very lucky to be the first doctoral students of Professor Lu. I would like to thank Professor Lu for five precious things I learned. First, write it down and well. In my graduate study under Professor Lu, writing weekly technical notes and revision after revision of a manuscript or a proposal was really painful. However, in this era of knowledge content, getting a profession of publish or perish, now it is me telling my students to write it down and well. Second, let us play game. I had thought I got a research assistantship to play games when I got the offer letter from Professor Lu in March 1981. Inspired by Professor Lu, I have since enjoyed the fascinating research area of game theory and incentive control. When I served as a commissioner in the National Communications Commission, Taiwan, a few years ago, I was highly benefited on doing regulatory policy design. I love to play games together with you, Professor Lu. Prefer optimize with an open mind and persistent effort. Professor Lu's talk today shares his research on Lagrange relaxation-based optimization. I remember I went in the summer of 1982 with Professor Lu to discuss with a biotech company in Connecticut about optimizing the supply of nearly hatched eggs to chicken farms worldwide. I was so impressed to see Professor Lu's attitude toward problem solving, openness in setting the goal, smart relaxation of complicating constraints, and persistent pursuits. Fourth, serve the community. Let me share one service activity of Professor Lu that you might not know. Since 2007, Professor Lu has been leading a weekly Bible study in the cyberspace consisting of group members in various countries. I have received more than 500 copies of Bible study materials over the years. Fifth, and the last, and the most important of all, let me quote Proverbs, chapter nine, verse 10. "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom, and the knowledge of the holy is understanding." Professor Lu and Mrs. Lu helped me accept Jesus Christ as my Savior in my last year at UConn, which has been the treasure of my life. Professor Lu and Mrs. Lu, thank you so much. Congratulations to you again.
Thanks Professor Zhang for sharing his stories with us. I think the best thing of being professors is to see that your students are teaching their students the way that they are taught. So the second speaker is Professor Xiao Hongguan. He graduated in 1993. Currently, he is a professor in Xi'an Jialing University in China. He is also Changjiang professor of system engineering and also the dean of School of Electronic and Information Engineering. He was also the head of Department of Automation and also the director of Center for Intelligent and Network Systems at Tsinghua University. Also, he is a member of Chinese Academy of Science, a T B fellow, and also a member of UConn Academy of Distinguished Engineers. So let us see, what is his story?
Professor Lu, distinguished professor and teacher of UConn, the fellow student of Professor Lu's group. I'm Xiao Hongguan from Xi'an Jialing University and Tsinghua University. I used to be Professor Lu's student and his team member. I studied at UConn with Professor Lu from a PhD degree from 1988 to 1993. I still remember very vividly my first presentation made to Professor Lu, my first TA class, the discussion and argument and our group meeting, and so many dinner we had at Professor Lu's house, especially his first house and Matthew Center. I can't appreciate too much on my education at UConn with Professor Lu and the opportunity Professor Lu given to me. Without this education, I cannot have my current career and I cannot have what I'm having now. I sincerely wish Professor Lu will have a greater achievement and all the students at Professor Lu's group will complete their education at UConn smoothly and have a great and bright career in the near future. Thank you very much.
Well, as the grandfather of this.
How many grandchildren? You must have like a hundred grandchildren.
Something like that. You can look at mathematical genealogy, I have completed. But let me make one comment and follow with two short questions. The comment, as a student giving talks, I know how much time you put into this short talk, and I'm really impressed. There's no criticism I can make. I would love to have made such a talk. It reminds me of the story of Samuel Johnson, Scottish literature. He once wrote a short letter, and he said, "I apologize for writing such a short letter, because I don't have time to write a longer." And giving short talks is really something difficult. Most of you may not pay attention, but as a student, I paid a lot of attention to give a talk, and this is one of the best talk I have. And I'm going to recommend it to everybody. Short comment. A short question. One, first, this is technical. You very clearly illustrate your breakthroughs you paid on the formulation title. If you're very good example, dimension, very clear access. But one of the dirty secrets of mathematics is that if the dimension goes up, number variable goes up, she gets much more complicated. So my question to you is, is your method make it still easy to drop the variables and so forth?
So we don't, just, good question. So we don't, just like optimization, we don't actually demand for true optimal? Like tightening is, we just looking for near tightness.
But he's already going to decompose the problem with this file dimension, so.
Okay, so what you think is, you will highly manage it, easy to learn which thing to drop?
Yeah, yeah, so near tight.
Second short question, of course, is some people, everybody will ask, have you solved, I try to compare with older methods and solve a problem that couldn't be solved before? Thank you very much.
And thank you Professor He for the speech. I think to all of us, all the memories with Professor Lu are always invaluable treasures to us. When we look back, it is more than wonderful. So our next speaker is Dr. Joseph Yan, who graduated in 1994. Currently, he is the principal manager for fundamental modeling and analysis at Southern California Edison. He is also a member of UConn Academy of Distinguished Engineers. There's no picture for him, because he is right, he's just sitting right there.
Thank you. And again, I'm Joseph Yan, and I'm Professor Lu's student between 1994 and 1994. Professor Lu was tough and was very demanding. And I don't know how many students are still here, and I believe he's still tough and he's still demanding. And I have learned a lot from Professor Lu. What I learned helped me to complete my education and also advanced my career in real world as well. Professor Lu is a teacher and Professor Lu is a mentor. And I still remember, when I first time read the, write the paper and get the Professor Lu's comments, such as, "Not clear, bad sentence, and why here?" And Professor Lu spent a lot of his time to help me to revise the paper and go in a, in a wisdom, many, many iterations. You guys see, iterations, iterations, many, many iterations in a day and a night. We have 24 hours a day or 48 hours a day. Going through this in a process, and I have learned how to write the technical papers and also improve my English. And more importantly, and I developed work, work ethics and know how to pursue the excellence. Thank you very much, Professor Lu, for all you have done and for all, so many of us. And congratulations. And you are a board and of trustee distinguished professor, and you are well deserved.
Yes, thanks Dr. Yan. He is a sponsor of our lab. I think supporting Professor Lu and our big family is a thing that we always want to do and we will do. So our next speaker is Dr. Robert Tomastic, who graduated in 1995. Currently, he is Technical Fellow for Operations Research at Pratt and Whitney. He was also a manager for Operation Optimization at UTRC. Welcome back home.
Peter, congratulations. There were a few reasons why I decided to study under Peter, and those reasons still ring true today amazingly. There are basically three reasons. The first was it was clear then, as it is now, Peter was a very accomplished researcher and teacher. Obviously, when you want to study under someone, that's very important. Also, Peter was then as now, very much tied into industry and his philosophy of solving problems that are practical and have an industrial impact was very important to me. And I saw that in Peter, and that rings true over these many years. And lastly, and just as importantly, I could tell when I first met Peter, that he was a very caring, kind, and humble person. And that was very true then, and it's been true ever since. So those are some of the reasons that I decided to join Peter, and I just want to thank you for that. Peter, congratulations on Board of Trustees. It's amazing honor, and very well deserved. The amount of knowledge that you've created and disseminated through your publications, patents, and of course through your teaching, students like myself and others here today, it's just incredible. And you've had an impact. I've seen it myself. I've helped make that impact at United Technologies, where we have, of course, sell products that serve, that help buildings be more efficient, manufacturing, production planning. All those areas are very important to United Technologies, and your work has contributed to that. Lastly, on a personal note, again, I would just like to thank you for teaching and mentoring me. It's meant a lot to me. And between you and this great school of engineering at UConn has provided me with a really solid foundation of skills and knowledge that have served me very well over the years. So, congratulations, Peter. And thank you.
Yes, thanks Dr. Tomastic. I think no matter where we came from, no matter what we are now, and no matter what we are doing, we are always Professor Lu's students. So student a day has kids forever, right? So our next speaker is Professor Mihal Bragan. I think for the one who already took Professor's class, you know him well, right? He is famous for SLR, right? Let's welcome to him.
Dear colleagues, friends, and guests, let me start my speech by asking you, what makes a scientist great? If you ask me to use one word, I would say, what makes a scientist great is his vision. To me, the true vision is not the ability to see what others can see. It is the ability to see what nobody else could see for years, decades, sometimes even centuries. Peter Lu's vision is truly great. To put things in perspective, let's think about this. It took roughly 220 years before Albert Einstein was able to revolutionize physics after Isaac Newton published his work on loss of motion. In a similar way, during roughly 220 years since Joseph Lagrange published his seminal paper, nobody was able to revolutionize the Lagrangian relaxation method until Peter Lu realized that notwithstanding the difficulties of the method that he just mentioned, there are smart ways to overcome those difficulties. So that the resulting method, as far as I know, to answer Larry Ho's question, beats other methods, hands down. I I would like to congratulate Peter Lu on this great achievement. No great achievement like that would be possible without this great vision. No problems of importance would be possible to solve without this great vision. Vision is the great trait of a great scientist. That's what sets a great scientist apart, what makes a difference in the world. And now, allow me to introduce the final speaker, the professor who was also part of this vision, Bing Yan.
Yeah, at last, I also want to say a few words. As we just saw, all of Professor Lu's former students are all doing very well, no matter in academic or in industry. I was very lucky to stand on their shoulders. So as the only female student speaker today, I want to tell some small stories about Professor Lu. So first one, he is patient. He has corrected my pronunciations for thousands of times since I came to UConn, such as idea, method, and cut. You know what I'm talking about, right? Also, he taught me how to write papers, proposals, technical reports, etc., word by word, literally, word by word. Second, he is dedicated. So once I asked him a question, how would he process all his emails? Because he may receive hundreds of them every day. Is there an efficient method? He said, "No, I would just read them one by one." So that's why you may receive his email at 4:00 PM or even 5, sorry, 4:00 AM or even 5:00 AM.
I receive it 1:00 AM. I'll read it up.
Last but not least, he is enthusiastic. Although he has taught his classes for so many years, but he would still spend a whole day, at least a whole day, to prepare for his class every week. So once I received a phone call from Mrs. Lu, so saying, he was, sorry, she was locked outside the house. He called Professor Lu's office, but no one answered. So guess what? Professor Lu is preparing, was preparing for his class and didn't pick up the phone.
So he answers emails but not phone calls.
I don't answer phone calls.
I think Professor Lu sets an excellent example for us, how to be a great faculty members, a researcher, a teacher, and also a mentor. He always say, "Good, good, good to throw away. You have to be excellent." I sincerely thank him for his years of mentorship. So now, let us give him, sorry, a big round of applause for his achievements in research, in teaching, and in service.
I think there is food. Please enjoy. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for all the coming.
I put some.
Send me a copy. No, I have to, because I cannot try it like before. Very good talk. I can understand a little bit.
Did you want me to take one of that?
No, there's too many people.
I just took a whole bunch, so. One of my last video.
Small group, small group.
Now, I'm going to.
Cheers.
Okay, come on. Okay.
I'm going to have dinner with my daughter. At the cafeteria. Yeah, Cheryl, she's UConn junior. Yeah, because the paper is all published, I think. Yeah, I guess. Actually, I can ask her to.
This is, I think, is.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah, so anytime. Try to tighten the constraint. It's my, this is what we're doing every day. Yeah, it's, it's, it's program using the computer and the software will kind of use something called Express. It's part of the commercial. Some kind of. And I think. Chuck, chuck. Then when you cut, you're cutting the support problem. And then it's maybe a lot more. But if you see the group of problems you want to cut, individuals, they cannot cut effectively. Thanks. Tighten, tighten it. I think maybe. The decision matter also in UConn. Yeah, we have transmission system. We have. We have a transmission system. Now, we have power. Yeah, so, and if started here, it's a week, it's one hundred sixty hours. So what you mean, state of California? No, we say that in state of California. It's eighty percent of California. Because, you know, we have California Independent System operates the eighty-one percent of the California. I have munis, you know, public, you know. So that's the size.
So you bring the time into hours or days? That must be hourly.
Yeah, it's, you know, has hourly.
Oh, that's good. Alright. Hourly for a week?
Yeah, it's a one hundred.
Times three thousand generators.
And four thousand. No, no, no. We, in the future, we are, nuclear in the future is, you know, is vital. Okay. But I'm just trying to say different. Some can turn it off pretty easily, but others probably cannot. Like nuclear, can, can turn it off.
Wind, it's wind, it's solar, part air.
Drive me crazy, but. And those are very uncertain. The uncertainty is, to deal with uncertainties, you, you as a master of law, we do have reserve and margins. Say, when our law is one hundred and our capability usually is hundred seven. We have seven in the Midwest to deal with. And in line law, you know, you lost the line, you lost the unit, and the solar is not generated. The uncertainty is increases, you want to require increased in the margins of capacity. But, you know, that's not the only part. It's complexities, how do you integrate, okay? Because right now, and you don't have that issue. The fuel, gas, we always assume there. Hydro, we think is limited resource, but waters. And your water is still in your reservoir. You can push the button, it's going to be generate. And then, yeah, gas is going to be there. But the wind and solar, the fuel is the function of the time.
Right.
Yeah, and also Mother Nature too. Mother Nature, I don't, in the deal with, we increase the margin to deal with. But the fuel is, is, you know, is a function of the time. That increased and the complex dramatically.
Yeah.
And you could match the point.
So all the techniques you use to manage the system, are they all the software and algorithm? Are they all essentially developed internally to your company or do you buy?
Joseph will not, you know, develop internally. And it has to be commercial.
Okay, so how do you incorporate Peter's results into commercial software?
No, that, you know, that's time. Because I tried to push it later in two thousand fifteen or two thousand fourteen. Because our company is a significant enterprise. I don't have that money. They cut all my, you know, the budget in two thousand zero. Other than, you know, either you keep the head or you cut, you know, that's, you know. So that's why I stopped. Originally, what I thought is a methodology and what can you push to the federal company to adopt this. And I can use our company. And we are a utility company, goes through there. And forces, and we're going to fight and actually, you know, two wins. I'm just on reason of a rate occurred in our market. And force them change everything. And which is also change the objective function too. And I mentioned to you before. And currently, product in all the market, in, you know, form the prices is based on the un commitment. It's based on the, the, the world, you know, when the utilities integrate, vertical integrate the utility company, the people all put to the cost. Right now, the market is not costing, it's the bits. And the bits sometimes reflect the cost, sometimes just completely. Once you beyond the marginal cost and social welfare, maximizing, you'll be commitment, but you have the bit, you're trying to minimize the underneath triangle cost. And you set the price, everybody pay that price. Basically, it's rectangle. And the previous series, if this is all cost, I minimize the total and production cost. And then it will equivalent maximize the social welfare. Because it actually demand is vertical. And this is, this is complicated. Once you deviated for that, and you're not, you know, you cannot accomplish maximize the social welfare. And then, and the price you're setting and the residuals is not the social welfare anymore. So we said, I identified this problem. And then we said, the price needed to be in the function. We minimize not triangle anymore, it's the rectangle. And then this is unsolvable, because you see, it's, the structure is not separate. Because the price is related to all the generations in for that hour. And also, it is also, it's in the product, product, product of the price versus your generation. There's a cross in the terms there. So then we started this about ten years. And company lost, yeah, company lost and cut the, all the cost. You know, we are, we become to the boom, the skeleton thing. This is limit. And my boss is SVP of the company is Mr. Carter. And he's the, you know, in Opex. So, yeah.
Should we go out?
Sure, 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 sure.
Yeah. I actually have, I'm going to die with my story.
His daughter is a student here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. You guys all take three stuff to rendition. You obviously, you want to take all the stuff to rendition.